I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Woody Rees Vocational Center High School on Wednesday, April the 8th. To order. As we do for all members, can please rise and hold the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag. The United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amen. I always want to say amen.
First order of business is public comment. Anybody here wish from the public wish to speak on any subject that's not on the agenda? Being heard, we'll move on to approval of the minutes.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Tucker.
May I move the approval of March 11 minutes of the Budget Workshop Meeting?
Second.
The second. Any addition, additions, completions, or changes to the minutes? Being heard, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, unanimous.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
May I move the minutes of March 11, 2015, minutes of the regular school committee meeting?
Second.
Any additional comments? Do we have a second on that?
Mm-hmm.
On my favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, unanimous. Treasurers' report. Mr. Tucker, could you fill in, please, for the treasurer tonight, sir?
I will move the seconds of the treasurer's report.
Second.
That was in the packet handed out tonight?
Yeah.
Is there a second? Second by Ms. Gilbert?
Yeah.
Are there any questions we got in the treasurer's report? Being heard, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, unanimous.
No, I'm voting present.
Oh, you're voting present, excuse me. Okay. Under all business, we have the school committee self-evaluation form. For those that have, have you, how many are we missing, do you know?
I don't know.
For those that have them, could you pass them forward for Lisa? And for those that don't, could you please try to get them in as soon as you can, so we can review them? Five, six, we have six, okay. Should we give them, well, they just, they're random, yeah, we'll pass them on. Okay. I appreciate it. Reports and communications, Mr. Bradley.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Superintendent DeRosa, and all other school committee members. The baseball team is still waiting for snow to clear before they begin their season. So far, they've been practicing indoors and outdoors. The baseball team is also looking to defend their third consecutive CAC championship this spring and return to the MIAA state tournament. The softball team is also waiting anxiously to get on the field this spring. They are practicing indoors and outdoors. With several returning starters and a senior base team, they look to make a run at the CAC title. They also hope to make a deep run in the state tournament like they did last season. The lacrosse team is hoping to have a promising season as well. They look to defend their third straight CAC championship, as well as win some tournament games this spring. The team looks for senior leadership to carry through, carry them through the season. They hope the snow clears soon, so they can begin, start playing, so they can start playing their games. The track and field team expectations are high this year, with many returning seniors and promising underclassmen. Once the track melts, they'll start running for time. Until then, they have been working out in the fitness center and in the parking lot, building up strength for a tough season. The key club is gearing up for the new year that began on April 1st. New officers have been elected, and the club is excited. Members will be attending our conference in Springfield this week, along with other schools, to share some experiences. During April vacation, they hope to spend time with clients at the Salisbury Council on Aging. They will share some stories and learn from each other as well. They also look forward to planting season over by the memorial and flags area. The chess club is continuing to add members, as there are about eight regular members. Members are enjoying their time competing. They added photos to the school newspaper and the yearbook. The yearbook club sent their final proofs to be printed. The club exceeded several goals this year, including fundraising $1,200 from senior portraits, collaborating with marketing to increase advertising sales to company sponsors, and adding a new section to the yearbook. The new section, titled Student Life, focuses on seniors in different environments, including the pep rally, art class, the cafeteria, and in shops. It adds a lot of energy to the book. The interact club is planning on a community service project at the Amos House on April 9th. They plan on doing some outdoors cleanup and helping in any way they can. The drama club had a wonderful, a wonderful performance of The Addams Family this past month. The turnout was excellent, and the cast and crew fulfilled expectations. The cast had a viewing party where they were able to watch their performance for the first time. With 16 seniors on the cast and eight and six on the crew, the club looks for some new members to fill the roles next year. The chorus club continues to meet on Tuesdays and Thursdays, with a focus on a cappella. The auditions for the senior talent show will be held on April, April 28th and May 5th for seniors. The show is planned for May 23rd, the last, the last full day of classes for seniors. A small group of seniors are preparing to sing the National Anthem for the graduation ceremony. The robotics team wrapped up a successful season, placing in 23rd of 40 teams in the event at UNH. They placed in 17th of 40 teams at the Reading Event earlier in the year. They are pleased with the outcome, considering they lost 12 of 36 days to design due to snow. They look forward to wrapping up their year with planning for fundraising, underclass train, uh, team training, overall planning for next year, and off-season events. That's all I have for you today.
Thank you.
Connor, I just have a question, um, will the underclassmen be able to go to the senior talent show that you're talking about?
Uh, no, that's just for seniors.
Oh, that's, uh, I think the guys would really like that. Maybe they'll, we'll reconsider. Thank you.
RHIP. Military child.
Rank has its privileges.
I'm sure, I know.
Thank you, thank you. Tonight, we have some of the presentation from the Skills USA.
This is a very small group of our students that went. We took 181 students to the districts. Out of those students, we had 49 medal winners. 18 of them were gold, 16 were silver, and 15 were bronze. Our next event is going to be April the 30th, March 1st, and March 2nd, that's the state event, and we're bringing 60 students to that event. So these are some of the gold medal winners. One of them, his, his mother came, he couldn't make it tonight, his name is Nicholas Corcoran, and his mother came just because he was unable to come, so I thought that was pretty cool.
Oh, she should be standing up.
She should stand with him.
You see your name, which shop you're in, what medal you won?
Your favorite teacher, tell me.
My name is Karen, I am in health occupations, I competed in first aid in CPR, and I placed first place gold medal.
Excellent.
Abel.
Excellent.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
My name is Noah Dejens, I am in the robotics and electronics shop, I placed silver in robotics and automation, along with my teammate Dominic Moscone, who could not make it here tonight, and I'm from Groveland.
Congratulations to you.
I am Joseph, I won the silver medal in the 3D animation and visualization competition. I, uh, my shop is CAD.
Would, would you make a, a commercial or a cartoon?
Um, we haven't made anything, and we just took the test.
The district's is just a written test. At the state level is when they actually do a competition. They have to pass a written test, which is, it's pretty difficult to pass. Had 100 questions?
Uh, yeah, so it was a lot of practice.
Wow.
Haverhill. April.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
To all of you.
Good job.
Okay. Thank you very much. And now move forward to the superintendent's report, please, Mr. Superintendent.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee. For informational purposes, I have some personnel actions in front of you, hiring two route bus drivers, Saturday vacation attendance program, 2014-15 Spring Musical, Atomic Learning Liaisons, vocational MacBook, iPad specialists, grade 10 ELAM CAS after-school programs, and coaches.
Mr. Superintendent, what are, what are Atomic Learning Liaisons?
Atomic Learning Liaisons are a technology-based tutorial program that provides professional development. Teachers have an access to a training library of 6,000 short show-and-tell video tutorials over the most commonly-used devices and software applications. They provide technical assistance to people doing that program.
Okay, thank you.
On the MacBook, iPad specialists, are they coaching the teachers or, or students?
Teach, both.
Oh.
Both.
And what is Saturday slash vacation attendance?
Students who have missed more than 10 days of school and need to make up days of school come to school on Saturday or during school vacation.
And what do they do?
So, schoolwork.
In the library, or?
I think it's the library, but I'm not sure the low, physical location.
What percentage of the kids that we actually want to come on the Saturdays and vacation, do we, do we get 100% that actually show up, or?
Usually, maybe one or two don't.
Okay, that's a very good percentage of, of the kids, obviously showing up, especially on the Saturdays or vacations. I know we've talked about that, and it's always been a nightmare dealing with parents who say, nope, we have vacations planned, or we're not going to send them on Sat, you can't make us send them, et cetera, et cetera, so it's a good percentage rate.
So if they don't come, how do we handle that?
It's an academic failure.
Okay. So it's, that's basically the, the, you found the best way to obviously, so if they don't show up, if they skip, then they'll receive the academic failure.
If they don't make it up by the end of the year, because they, you know, it's often on different Saturdays and vacations, then yeah, they receive an administrative failure.
Okay. That sounds good. Congratulations for your success with that, I know it's tough to get them there on vacations or Saturdays.
Thank you, that's the principle and the people and guidance, thank you.
Congratulations.
Okay.
Next, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
In terms of a budget update, I would just mention that the public hearing was tonight. In terms of an MCAS update, the biology MCAS results came in. We had one senior that needed to pass the exam and did, so we had 16 juniors take the bio, retest 13 passed, so the class of 2015 has 100% pass rate on all three of the MCAS exams and are eligible for high school diploma, provided they meet the district requirements. The class of 2016 has 100% pass rate in ELA, 100% pass rate in math, and 99% in bio. And currently, we're running a workshop on Mondays and Wednesdays from April 13th to May 18th, in preparation for the MCAS math, which will be coming up. In terms of superintendent's update, on Wednesday, March 18th, I attended the Merrimack Valley Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors meeting in Haverhill, it was hosted by a lying credit union. On Tuesday, March 31st, 2015, I went to the State House to meet with local legislators to discuss Chapter 70 funding. I had the opportunity to meet with Senator Katie Ives, Representative Brian Dempsey, Head of House Ways and Means, and Representative Diana DiZoglio. It was a good opportunity to talk about Chapter 70 funding and its impact on, on districts. On Wednesday, April 1st, I attended the Merrimack Valley Chamber of Commerce Business Expo. Following the expo, there was a luncheon with Speaker of the House Robert DeLeo was the guest speaker, and Maureen Lynch, the, the principal, came with me that day. On Thursday, April 2nd, Woodyar hosted a breakfast to review the proposed budget with member communities. In attendance was Tracy Blaze from Newberry, Michael Bertano from West Newberry, Neil Harrington from Salisbury, and Chuck Benevento from Amesbury. Also in attendance was Maureen Lynch, the principal, Cara Cosmos, the business manager, and Tammy Detremont, the comptroller, so it was nice to have the support in that meeting. On Tuesday, April 7th, we hosted another budget breakfast to be with other communities. In attendance was Carol McLeod, the Finance Director from Merrimack, Denise Stimbowski, the Finance Director from Groveland, Doreen Gorlick from Raleigh, and Rita Negri and Joanna Cuff from Ipswich. Also, again, I'd like to thank Maureen, the principal, Cara, the business manager, and Tammy for being there with me at those meetings. And that's it for my superintendent's update, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Couple of other pieces of business, I have two field trip requests, and I'll give them to you separately. As you know, it's school committee policy, that any time that students travel out of state, it requires a vote of the school committee. So there's a field trip scheduled for, um, May 6th, to go on a machine tech field trip to Newington, New Hampshire, so I need a motion for that, Mr. Chairman.
Second. Any questions on that? Yes, sir, Mr. Early.
We have all the paperwork in hand, filling in for the page.
Yes.
Yes.
That's, that's a one-day trip?
Yes.
Yeah, of course.
Any other questions? On my favor, please say aye. All opposed, unanimous.
Next, Mr. Chairman, the next, uh, what do you call it, field trip request, I'm sorry, is for a field trip on May 7th to the Portsmouth Naval Shipyard. Again, because it's out of state, I would need a motion from the committee.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions on that? Yes, Mr. Early.
We have the proper paperwork in hand.
Yes, we do.
On my favor, please say aye. All opposed, unanimous.
Next, Mr. Chairman, as you know, according to school committee policy, in order to accept money for a scholarship, I need school committee approval. New Report 5-Cent Savings Bank is donating $1,000 scholarship to a graduating Woodyar senior. I'd like to thank Janice Morse, President and CEO of the bank, with whom I communicated, for the generous scholarship.
Motion to approve. Second. Is this a one-time scholarship?
Most of the bank ones are, I, I usually ask on an annual basis around January, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Any other questions? On my favor, please say aye. All opposed, unanimous.
Next, Mr. Chairman, I included in the school committee packet tonight, a job description for superintendent, and four applicants, four candidates who applied internally for the superintendency. One candidate is not licensed as a superintendent, which is a requirement. One candidate says that they're licensed, but we were not able to verify that from the state. One candidate, their license is pending, and one candidate is fully licensed. So there are, those are the four packets that were sent out in your, what do you call it, your school committee packet.
Yes, sir, Mr.
Discussion, I, I read the minutes on, in the last minute relative to the process, and obviously, I wasn't here, so I, I read those minutes. Just my feedback, I know obviously, we, we've started a process with that. I would eventually, like, I, I wish the search actually encompassed both internal and external candidates. I believe the best candidate may be here, sitting in-house, but we don't know that unless we do a thorough search and look around. I think this is an attractive position, that many people would be interested, it's a very successful school, where I would assume many people want to work. I understand the certifications and the differences in the certifications, and that some superintendents don't have a vocational certification, I'm aware of that. But again, I don't think we know how many people would be interested, or do we know how talented those individuals are, or what their goals are, unless we actually ask them to apply and see what the crop is. I, I think that we owe it to, all of us owe it to the communities that we serve, to, to have the best candidate possible in place at this, in the superintendency, and that may be someone in-house, but it may also be an external candidate. So I, I just don't believe that in order to be qualified for the position, that you have to be an internal candidate. So I would like, I know why it was done, because of the timing, I certainly understand that, I've, I've been through multiple searches, but I do believe that this is certainly a position that will attract interest, and that we should do our due diligence and see who has an interest, who has a vision, and who can lead us, who's the best fit to lead us forward for the next five, 10 years. That's my feedback on that.
I think that's a very valid statement, yes.
Scott, if I could just, we had a, a meeting, and Mike Gilbert from MAS C came and spoke with us about the process and all of that stuff. One of the problems with going externally, when there is a very competent, or more than one competent person in-house, is that the superintendent world is a very small world. They know, if there's a, if there's a qualified in-house candidate, they won't even apply, because they're pretty sure you would go with the in-house candidate. So that kind of limits the pool. He had, he told us, he gave us a lot of good information, and it, but, but that was one of the reasons that if, if you know that, they won't apply.
I, I have been through that, like, we had at one point, three assistant superintendents, when we did a search, who were all very qualified of taking over the position, but we did, still received about 50 applicants for that position. So I, I, I don't necessarily believe, unless there's a perception that the, the position has already been filled, that people wouldn't apply for the position. I certainly would be willing to consider any candidate, I don't have any preconceived notions on, on who I would support, and, and certainly, that would be my position as a school board member to the public, is I'm open to any candidate that would want to apply for the position. And I, I just believe that some, there's always talented internal candidates, I haven't been through a search where there's not, but there's sometimes an external candidate that's just as talented, if not more. But I don't think you know unless you look, I don't believe any of us know the answer unless we look.
I think, I think it's a very valid point, too, that we can, we can take it one step at a time. Mr. Early.
Thank you. I, for the benefit of the Press and School Committee, I asked very much the same question after Monday night's meeting, why there wasn't other applicants from outside the district in the packets that we received. At Kentucky, we went through this, hiring a superintendent, we did have people within the district apply for the job, but we still went outside, pulled the applications, and we received over a couple dozen of them, so it will draw, I feel it will draw our applications.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Just a question for the superintendent, can you give us an update on the status, there are a few other vacancies that have just recently come up also?
Shawshing Valley Tech just opened up, as did Greater New Bedford, so there are three tech schools looking for superintendent.
That's unusual, to have three in one year?
Yes.
And then they don't expect to fill those, they're looking for interns in some cases?
No, they're doing searches.
Okay, but they may be also looking for interns?
My, it is my belief they're doing searches, as we are, they're doing what we're doing.
Yes, sir. In the, in the minutes of your workshop, when Mike came in, I believe someone asked the question, how much would it cost for an external circuit, and I believe he answered $20,000 approximately, so that's something I think we need to consider also.
I think we'll, I think we're going to go step by step, and we'll consider all avenues. Yes, Mr. Tucker?
Well, I just wanted to bring people up to speed, we have talked about this at the previous two or three meetings, and we knew that this was going to happen, and we thought, after getting advice from MAS C, that we thought it would be prudent to start with the in-house candidates first, see what transpires, and if need be, to go external. It, it sounded reasonable, and to me, it still sounds reasonable.
Yep.
Anything else? As far as the candidates go, I, I believe that those that have the superintendent certificate should be granted an interview, whether it's pending or not. Those that don't, I think we don't interview.
But in our requirements, or what we were looking for, we were also asking for experience in administrative positions.
Right.
And only one has that, so.
But I think it's, for in-house, you know, we should at least honor the, there's only, I mean, there's, there's two that have definite, one has one.
There's one definite.
Yeah.
One pending.
Pending, okay.
One that we were not able to verify, and one that has nothing.
So, okay, that's my personal opinion, I think the one that has it, that we can't verify, they have to verify it. Who do you verify it with?
DESI.
The state.
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Early.
Mr. Gilbert was a former, former member of the school board here, former chairman, he did a great job. He had some good ideas, as I had said in the past, I'd like to look outside. I believe we have some good candidates inside, but I'm always looking beyond that. As I had said before, and a lot of people might not, I think it's important, but we're running a $22 million business down here, we got a lot of educators already on board teaching here, so we have to look at that factor, too. Thank you.
Mr. Early, Mr. Chairman, to the superintendent, what, what does pending mean?
Means you went online and you applied.
Yeah, yeah, but who, who can answer us from DESI? Who, who?
When it's pending, nobody can, because until DESI processes it, it stays as pending.
So nobody can access that and tell us the reason for pending, or if it's just a fraud?
Pending just means you applied.
But is the paperwork there? I mean, is all the paperwork there? You can apply if it is, and they've been investigated.
No, it doesn't mean all the paperwork is there, no, it does not mean that. It means you went online, you paid the money, you applied.
But what are the, what are the, what are the qualifications to get the certificate?
The individual has to have experience in a vocational technical setting, with, in order to obtain the licensure, and have completed a 300-hour internship or practicum under a licensed superintendent.
Those courses on masters level.
Right.
So if, if an individual has those, then it is just a formality?
I, I just hesitate to speak for the department, I don't want to.
No, 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 but I mean, it's.
I mean, it's pretty clear, excuse me, I, I have, I do have the certification, and you, and I have it from an earlier point in time, and I know things have changed, but it's very clear what they ask for.
Right.
It prescribed what you have to have, and that's what I'm asking about the pending, if at some point, someone could, you know, intercept that and check it out, because otherwise, I see no, I see one candidate with technically a clear certificate, and it's prescribed what you do as far as years of service, as far as education, and the whole thing. If they don't have it, they don't have it.
Yes.
Oh, Mr. Early.
Oh, go ahead.
Looking at the internal candidates, if we decide that we want to also look at outside, it does not preclude that we may eventually select the internal candidate, all it means is we looked at it, and we felt, this is great, but we want to see outside.
Definitely.
So we're not rejecting an internal candidate if we decide to go outside, we're saying we're broadening the pool, and then we'll have a group to choose from. So it's not a done deal if we just, that's what we're doing.
Yes, Mr. Early.
Yeah, I'm going to suggest, we're going to, we wait until this May 14th letter that's in our packet that we've given to us tonight, to have the towns involved, that's a big thing. You know, this meeting right here, that the town of Merrimack's asking all the communities and everybody to go to.
Excuse me, I totally disagree, that's our responsibility. That's why we're here, that's our responsibility, we don't answer, that's why they, we've been appointed, and it's our job to do this.
Yes, I just wanted to make clear, or have explained to me possibly, the protocol for this job search. Like, right now, we're, we're discussing in open session, our choices, what we may or may not want to do, but I was under, understanding that we were going to have an, there was going to be an executive committee, not executive session, but executive committee meeting, to discuss this and come back, I, I'm.
Oh, you did? I, I didn't.
We already had it, right?
We already had that, I think.
So the executive committee did meet, and this is the result?
Yeah, right, right, you're right, yes.
I thought you had mentioned earlier to me that you were going to put an executive committee together, meet, and then bring it to the board.
Well, I think we had that meeting, everybody in, in the second session.
Everybody wasn't here.
Yeah. But the executive, the executive committee brought it to the board, that we were going to start with an internal, and then we, then, but, then go wider if we want to.
Was it this one?
Yeah, that was this meeting here.
March 4th.
March 4th.
And everyone was invited.
And everybody was invited, yes.
Mr. Early, if, it's our job to hire the superintendent, if we decide to choose somebody in-house, if we have a viable candidate that we'd like, we can do that. If, I think you're confused, if we decide to go out for a search, at that point, you have a search committee, and it involves members of the community, but not the school committee.
Right.
We would not be on that search committee. You have nothing to do with it, except interview the candidates.
A search committee for a superintendent of any position involves school committee members.
No.
Administrators.
No, school committee members on a search committee.
Oh, you're right, you're right, excuse me.
Nope.
Involves administrators, parents, and teachers.
Yeah, yeah.
Then narrow it down for the school committee.
Then narrow it down for the school.
Yes.
They bring the candidates, and we interview, right, right, right. They don't get involved in the, in the search.
Right here. Parents, staff, students, administration, and the general community. That's the protocol for a search, a search committee.
Correct.
They, and they narrow it down.
Correct.
And they bring the, what they consider viable candidates.
Maybe three or four.
To the school committee.
Correct.
Yes, Mr. Early.
Member Dave, you are a hundred percent right. We still have a responsibility for our communities.
We do, but we have a job to do, and that's why we're here. If we have to go back to our communities each time we're making a decision, then...
It's a big decision. It's a pretty big decision.
This is a decision that all school committees, you've dealt with three, Mr. Wood, correctly. This is a standard job. This is one of our main jobs, is selecting the superintendent. You look at our main jobs. It's the budget, it's the superintendent. That's about it.
Oh, that's about it. You're right.
Oh, yeah.
Why would we delegate one of our two main tasks? That's why we're here.
Are you referring to this letter here?
Yes.
This letter has nothing to do with the superintendent?
No, I know that, but we should bring it up while everybody's there. All these community selectmen and town people.
We can inform them what our plans are, but they're not gonna legislate to us how we're gonna do it.
Thank you.
Joe?
Yes.
I would, I certainly agree with Mr. Mansfield. Sorry, I haven't really, but I do agree. It is the school committee's role and function to hire and appoint a superintendent. Certainly, we can solicit feedback from anyone we want, if we wanted to ask for somebody's feedback. But ultimately, it's everyone here's decision on, on who fills that and how you wanna go about filling that. That's any school committee's decision. Certainly, that doesn't mean that we don't consider what other people's input and listen to other people and their suggestions. But I, I agree with you that that's our, that's our main role, and that's our function. When I did see the applicants, obviously, I, I did notice the same thing that Superintendent DeRosa reported, that there was in the certifications, I only saw one, maybe two, because one is, as the status sat, as pending, that were licensed as a, as a superintendent. And one of those two candidates, if the other one is gonna get licensed, or if we find out they, they do have it, may be the best candidate. I guess the only point that I was making is, is that I have just found that it's, it's just my personal opinion, and I don't speak for anybody else, and I didn't speak to anybody in Haverhill to tell me what to do, and I don't need anyone to tell me what to do. I just think that it's a, a better idea to have a large group of candidates that you can sit through, that people can sit through and hear their vision. Where do, where do, where do he or her wanna take us? I think that that is very important, and search committees do a good job. I know that you can't have a quorum of a, of a school committee on a search committee, but legally, you could have a small number of the...
Not on the committee.
That's, that's incorrect. It's been done numerous times. As long as it's not a quorum, then you can certainly have a school committee member or two if you wanted to. There's nothing in the law that prevents that.
That's correct.
Yeah, that is. And then that'll be up to the school committee.
Right. That's what I was, so certainly, if we wanted to, to put two members or three, whatever we want, as long as it wasn't a quorum, we could do that. I just think, seeing what we got, I think that it's in the beneficial for, for this board, and at least for myself speaking, that we see a, a wide variety of candidates, hear their vision, let them, you know, the top, whatever, three to five candidates come forward, and see where they wanna take the school in the next five to ten years. It's a very, very important decision, one that I don't take lightly. I don't have any preconceived notions about anybody. I haven't been here long enough to know anybody. So that's why I think that it's important that it's the best candidate, and we have to look for that.
And I, I tend to agree with that. But I think we, we set a process in place, and we're just gonna follow that.
Well, it looked like the process, well, you have the internal part complete now, so it looks like you have, we have to decide what the next steps are gonna be.
Well, Mr. Chairman, as I said, we do want, we were told that most likely, we wouldn't get a number of, I know you get them from your experience. We were told we had individuals come in and talk to us saying, you really need to vet out your internals, and if it comes out that we've looked at everybody, we still wanna look at a broader community, then most likely you'll get a larger pool. So we're not saying that that's, we're only looking here, and then, once we reject them, we're gone. We wanna open it up, but this is the only, the best way, we were told, to allow for that. And so there are a number of us that feel that, yes, we do wanna do it, go out, but we would like to do it in this step manner, as prescribed and recommended by the, the state, so...
And Mr. Chairman, if I could, because it was directed at me, I, I understand that that, that's the advice you receive. Obviously, that was the advice that was received. I just was saying for the record that I, I disagree with that. That I think that we should have taken, or should take, all applicants and consider them at once, not the internals, and then either, if we accept them, then we never looked at anyone external. If we deny them, then you're already denying them ahead of time. You don't look at them in competition or side by side with your external candidates to see their vision.
We would be just saying, we've seen the candidates, we would like to open it up, and they are in the pool with the larger candidates, the other candidates.
So you would interview them and then say, well, thank you for your interview, but now we wanna repost it and go out. I mean, I, I mean, sure, you can do that, but to me, it would seem better if they're side by side at the same time and not, well, thank you for your interview, but now we're gonna go look at external candidates, because I believe an internal candidate may take that offensively, quite frankly, if you say, well, thanks for the interview, but we're not gonna hire you yet. Now we wanna do the external. That's why I disagreed with the, the process.
I tend to agree with Scott on that one. It becomes a slap in somebody's face if, if, after you interviewed them
and said, well, now we're gonna go outside. And also, by going outside, you'll validate any in-house candidate, because you've compared them to a variety, hopefully, that you'd get.
Absolutely.
So I'd be inclined to, to go along with that, for sure, in spite of the fact that there was discussion and process and so forth.
Yes, Mr. Tucker?
I'd just like to remind us that we had an, had excellent transition last time hiring from within. We've gotten an excellent candidate. He's built a team that I think is second to none as far as putting together a valuable administrative team. And I, I would say out of respect and loyalty to him, I would interview these candidates, or interview the candidates that we choose, and go from there.
I agree.
Right.
Well, I, I wouldn't consider it, you know, respecting loyalty. I mean, that, we're, it's a, it's an important position. And he's done a very fine job. He has a very good staff. But we do have to, to do it. My assumption was that, okay, this is a process we said we were gonna do. We'll look at these. And then if the majority of us feel that, well, we'd still like to have them compared to a larger one, we'll go outside due to the, the costs that we'd have to pay. But I certainly wouldn't base anything on any loyalties or, or past things.
Absolutely. I am proud of what he's done with this school, and the team he's put together, and the administrators we have. And I, and I think they deserve a chance. They deserve a shot.
I think we're gonna move on. Everybody's had their...
Could I just say one thing?
Go ahead.
I think that the, most of the, the discussion about maybe going out to search is from our newer members who have not been here and see the valuable contribution of our administrative team, and to see how they work, and, and what accomplishments they've made, and how they are qualified. So those of us who have been here for any length of time, just see this as a natural progression. So I understand where you're coming from, but you have to know what's happening in this school to appreciate what we have. And that's what Brett has been wanting. He's had his hand up forever.
I'm sorry.
One thing that we should know is that, it's crazy, we're gonna be limited as to the, we're not gonna get as big of a pool for a vocational superintendent as you would in an academic school, because of the requirements. And now that we've learned that Shawshing and...
Greater New Bedford.
Right, and Bedford is, is searching also, that's gonna, that's gonna shrink the pool even, even further, not necessarily. And I, I agree with Mr. Mansfield, and as far as this letter goes, this letter has nothing to do with this search.
No.
Yes, just hitchhiking the last two speakers. There's a culture here. Most schools have a culture. And sometimes it's good, sometimes it's not so good. Right now, we have a, a strong leadership team, and I think that's important to at least consider that. The other thing is, I've been, again, involved for forty years in education. I've been on search committees for, for superintendents, for principals in a large city, larger than what a district has. And we've gone to nationwide searches and come up with some really good candidates academically, and they get there and fail because they don't understand the culture. Vocational education, the various states are not the same as Massachusetts. So if you have somebody even with a vocational cert from Maryland, it may not fit in with all of the things that we need here exactly the way they fit now. So the culture, plus the experience of going outside, is not necessarily good. Sometimes it is. I just think this time, I think we have a real good continuum, or a chance for a continuum, of a solid district in vocational education, from the leadership of Mr. DeRosa, and going right down through the team. And I think, I think you gotta really consider it, sincerely consider it.
The question now is, how, what is the wish of the committee to move forward with the four candidates? If they, if they don't have the superintendent's certificate, do we disqualify them?
I think if they don't have it, yes, you disqualify. That's, that's part of the qualifications. If they don't have it, you say, thank you very much, you know, just you didn't fit the ticket.
So what about the one that's pending?
The one that's pending, I think we have to possibly consider, at least within a respectable amount of time, to see that that can be...
And what about the one that says they have it, but we can't verify it?
It's gotta be verifiable. I mean, that's, that's like, what, I think one person, I like to see the, the college degree. I mean, I think that should be in any final packet.
It's, it's, it's all on the candidate. They have to produce the certificate.
Exactly. They, they need the college...
Just like trying to get a job as a teacher. If you're not qualified, you're not qualified.
Yes.
We do have the qualifications. This was the official posting for the position?
Yeah.
I mean, it, it says the requirement includes the superintendent's assistant superintendent, but a master's degree and five years' experience as an administrator, school leader. Do all these candidates meet all those requirements?
Only one.
I mean, really, if, if these are the requirements, they have to meet them for the posting, correct?
And that's right in the first paragraph.
Two of the, one of the candidates meets the, meets exactly what's there. Another candidate has had administrative experience, not in a school district. And two, one of which is not licensed anyway, have had none.
So really, you're, you're down to two, if you're sticking to your qualifications?
Yes.
Which you have to do, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Just for clarification.
So, so we're disqualifying those two. Everybody agree to that?
You people, not, not me.
No, I'm just saying, yes.
State Department qualifies.
The state.
I think the, I, I understand what you're saying about, I think the question that really is most important for us is, like I said, with the interviews with the internal candidates, is are we gonna consider external or not? Because I think once you interview them and then say, well, yeah, then we want you to apply in an external search, I, I think that becomes a slap in the face to the internal candidates. I have no doubt about the jobs that's been done over the prior two administrations here. I think it's been an excellent job. And I'm not saying the best candidate's not in-house. I, I think that's misconstrued. I'm simply trying to say that we should be looking at as wide of a pool as possible. When I'm picking the leader for the next five or ten years for kids, I'm, I'm not picking that out of loyalty to any individuals. I am picking that out of what's best for kids for the next five or ten years. Not about loyalties, but what's best for children. That's what we're all here for, is what's best for children. And it may be the internal candidate, or candidates that are the best. I'm not saying it's not. I'm just saying we don't have a large enough group of pool together to really see different ulterior vision, different visions for what's ahead for the school. So it's, it's not a slap on the face for any of the internal candidates. Some of them didn't meet the qualifications, unfortunately, so they can't be considered anyway. But it's not a slap in the face to any of those four individuals. I'm saying my loyalties are with the kids that are gonna get their education here for the next five or ten years. And I wanna make sure that whoever is the superintendent, internal or external, is the best candidate that we had presented before us. That's all I'm saying.
I agree with that.
Yes. Does that mean we're gonna change our method, or, and open it up to all candidates? So all the candidates are viewed at the same time?
I would make a motion that we repost that anybody could apply for the position, that we consider the applicants of both internal and external candidates that meet the, the qualifications of the job posting.
I'm second to that with one minor amendment, that they also be qualified and approved by the...
Department of, yep, DESI, that they have the proper certifications from DESI.
Point of order? We took a vote, the executive committee took a vote at that meeting to first interview the in-house candidates before we decided to go to a vote. If you wanna change that, then you have to have someone who voted in favor of that withdraw their, and, and change, and, and bring that forward for a vote again.
Under Robert's rules, not if it's a different, completely different motion. That's only if on the same motion, under Robert's rules of order.
The first motion still applies.
The first motion still applies.
Correct, but you can make a second motion that would go over that. That's completely allowed under Robert's rules of order. There's nothing that stops you from making a second motion. You couldn't make the exact same motion as the first time. You would need the, somebody that was in the majority to do that. But you can make a completely separate motion under Robert's rules of order, which we operate under.
The, we, we could make a different motion every month.
Yes, we can.
To, to have an internal this month, and then an external next month, and then an internal a month after that.
Absolutely.
I'd like to see us follow through with what we've been talking about, what we decided to do, move forward and interview, have the executive committee interview the candidate qualifies, and come back with a suggestion. Everybody can go to an executive committee.
Yeah, okay.
It's not executive session where it's secret. It's an executive committee where we can all go. But that's the, that's the body we chose to make this, make that decision.
As a point of order, Mr. Chair, I think I made a proper motion that was seconded, so there is a, a motion on the floor.
We're gonna vote it. Any other questions?
Let's discuss it first.
Let's discuss it. Yes, who wants to discuss it?
I had my hand up.
Well, go ahead, sir.
Clearly, people here have somebody that's working here in mind for the job, and they probably are the best candidate. But I think we owe it to our communities to do our diligence and make sure that they absolutely are the best candidate. Let's look at some of the interviews, the applications rather, and compare them. At least have something to compare, so when we finally make the choice, we'll know this is the best move for what here, for the students, and for the communities.
Yes.
I would prefer to go, obviously, the way we had already originally voted. I also am reluctant to spend twenty thousand dollars of the district's money until we have done what was recommended by MASC and interviewed in-house candidates. Twenty thousand dollars is a lot of money. And yes, in the long run, if it's for, of, you know, we need a better candidate or whatever, then naturally, we have to do that. But there's more than the twenty thousand involved. You've gotta travel, you've gotta visit these people, and some of them are from out of state. But that being said, I just think, I'm not doing it for the money. I'm doing it because this was what we decided. We have a fantastic candidate that I would like to hear from that candidate, or the two candidates, or whatever we decide to bring forward. I, we may, they may knock our socks off. So, and that's what I'm hoping for. Thank you.
I'd like to stick with what we originally voted on in the executive meeting and follow through with that.
There's a motion on the table. I believe we should adhere to it. Not only that, twenty thousand dollars and a twenty-one or twenty-two million dollar budget.
I understand that, Dick.
Is a big problem, I don't think.
I understand that.
We're paying tens of thousands of dollars on other things, lawyers and things like that.
Yes, sir.
Before that money's...
You'd be spending a lot more than that if it wasn't for the lawyers.
Twenty-two million dollar budget.
Yeah, okay.
That's the, that's the wish of the committee. The committee decides to vote, to go forward, open it up. It doesn't matter what the money is.
Right.
Yes, sir.
Well, my point, my point was...
Hold on, we got, no discussion.
Just because we take applications, now you have something you can compare... Just because we take applications, now you have something you can compare with what you have in hand already, does not mean we have to book a flight and go down and see these people there.
Uh, excuse me.
Yeah, you do.
Oh, 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 Mr. Mansfield.
No, I, I, I agree with the motion. Mr. Woods made some very good points, but I think it really comes down to, after the discussion, is if we want to stick with the original way, you vote no. And if you wanna proceed this way, you vote yes. But it's pretty, pretty simple with that.
Right. If, if we go outside and a search committee comes back with three to five candidates, we have to do our due diligence, which means if we gotta go to St. Louis, we go to St. Louis. If we gotta go to Dallas, Texas, we go to Dallas, Texas. We, we see them in their, in their, in their school districts, we see how they work. It's gonna cost some money. And that's not the important thing. Districts do this all the time. And it's important to go outside, particularly if you don't have anybody in-house. It's gonna be even worth it. We have a couple of candidates, at least we should, at least honor to look at. That's my point. I'm not, I'm not against completely going out, but I think if you have some candidates in-house, it'd be a lot easier if they know the system, they've worked with it, to stay right there.
Any more discussion?
Just one last point, and, and I think what's been debated enough. My motion is, obviously, I wanna include the internal candidates. My motion is that we just don't exclude anyone from applying for it, certainly put.
Yes.
Any more previous question? Well, just to, one more point. I, I'd love to see a, a big pool of candidates. My concern is that the existing internal candidates may look at some of these other openings. But coming in, to Mr. Irving's point, we've got incredible success in the school right now, given, you know, all the indicators that were shown in this handout tonight. And culture is something very hard to keep going. If, if things were broken here, I'd be much more inclined, really almost saying we have to look outside. But it's, it's, when you have a good culture, we're gonna hear, I believe, next, one of the items that I've hoped to see in my tenure on this board in eight, nine years is to eventually fill this school with in-district kids. It sounds like we're gonna do that eventually. And, and, you know, this administration has, has been able to do that by bringing up the, the level of the education, the extracurricular activities, and just getting the word out. Whittier's really on a high right now, so it, it is a tough situation. I'd love to, you wanna see the best, but when you've got something that's working and working really well culturally, you wanna try to keep that going if you can, too.
This is the last one, then we're gonna vote.
I hate to keep pounding on this. You're a hundred percent right, but this is a business. You've got a twenty million dollar budget, it's a business. You've got plenty of good educators around, whoever's gonna be the CFO, whatever title you wanna give them. This is a business, and that's the only reason why I'm looking at it.
All right. So can, can you reread the motion, please? So we get, I wanna make sure everybody understands the motion.
I don't even understand it. To open, to open it to external, internal candidates that meet the DESE licensure qualifications.
In the previous poll, in the previous polling, by adding the language that Mr. Burns suggested.
Expand, you wanna expand the.
That they be certified as a, as mass DESE certification.
To outside, non-intern, non-intern, non-internal candidates also. Right. Is that, is that good? Yes.
So let me just understand, so then this would change the original?
Yes.
Okay, so would this would be that?
So if you wanna stick with the original, you vote no. If you wanna change, you vote yes.
Thank you.
You wanna start with the internal, which doesn't preclude that we could go outside later for internal candidates, but start inside first. You vote no. If you wanna stop what's happening.
And include.
And then advertise what do we have to do to outside. You vote yes, okay?
Thank you.
Roll call?
Uh, well, it's not financial.
Move the question.
Move the question.
Can we, can we ask for a roll call vote?
Okay, roll call. Mr. Irving. Oh, oh, Mr. Early. We'll go, we'll go around this way.
Yes, go out.
Go out, yes.
Yes.
Mr. Woods, Mr. Gilman. Yes. Miss Gilman.
Nope.
No. No, no. No.
No.
No.
No.
Yes.
Yes.
No.
No. Yes.
Wait, what are you doing?
What's the vote?
Five yes. Six no.
Six no. So it, it passes? I don't have to vote.
You don't have to vote, it's a tie.
I don't have to unless it's a tie.
No, so it doesn't pass?
Doesn't pass. Six to five. So we're gonna stick with the original plan and then make the decision after that. We're gonna extend it.
So your executive committee will make an appoint, uh, set up an interview appointment.
So how many candidates are we gonna interview?
So far, you only have one call.
We only have one?
Yeah, I think you earlier discussed you're gonna do the pending also.
I think you better do the two, just to.
Right.
We're gonna do two.
Just a question. The executive will do this, they'll make a recommendation. What does the school committee have to vote? Is it just a simple majority or is it a supermajority for superintendent?
Majority.
What's that, simple majority?
Simple majority.
Okay.
And obviously.
Yes, sir.
Obviously, this meeting is, should be attended by as many people who are.
Everybody's welcome.
Well, it's, it's, it's not a.
That's, that's just the recommendation.
Again, executive committee recommends to the full committee, always.
Right, but those that wish to come.
But we could be present, correct? And listen, yeah?
We'll always be present and listen, yes.
And that's always helpful, too.
Right. Okay. Mr. Superintendent.
Okay. Moving on, Mr. Chairman. Next on the agenda.
A point of order. We haven't voted on, on the first recommendation from the.
To accept the minutes.
Yeah, you did, in the minutes, the minutes this evening.
Yeah, we did.
We voted on it.
We voted, that's included in the minutes or?
It's at the end of our agenda, I believe.
No, Mr. Tucker made the motion, right?
And I seconded it for the, for that first meeting and the.
On March fourth?
Didn't we?
Yeah.
So you're right. No, that was, I'm talking about, she's talking about the March fourth one.
Yeah, we did.
We, those don't get voted on. We accepted the budget, we accepted the.
Yeah, you're right. We didn't do that.
Then this one was scheduled for the last vote.
Oh, they are?
According to the.
Oh, the subcommittee.
Executive subcommittee.
They're doing the.
We can accept that.
That's what you're talking about. As at the end, we were gonna, we were gonna accept them.
They're doing the committee reports.
Yes.
So could we, can we have the vote even though we haven't accepted the minutes? Is that what your, is that what your point of, is that your point?
My point is you should, how can you rescind one way of doing it, refer to it, and then have not voted it?
Well, he didn't rescind, that was just, that was a separate standalone motion.
Right.
Yeah, that was a separate motion.
That wouldn't preclude another standalone motion at the next meeting, so. I mean, there's no one for. I don't know if we procedurally did it right, that's.
Well, he brought up the motion, that's, and the motion was appropriate, so we voted it.
Okay.
He didn't amend the previous motion.
No, it was a brand-new motion.
It's a brand-new motion.
Gotcha, all right.
Right.
Yes, go ahead.
Under school choice. Normally, Mr. Chairman, I would be asking the school committee to, to vote.
Go ahead.
Normally, Mr. Chairman, I'd be asking the school committee to vote on an allocation of seats for school choice. But it appears, given the in-district acceptances, there are no seats available for school choice for grade nine. My only point of confusion is a vote is not required if you're not going to do it, yet sometimes the state asks if you voted on it. And when I've, I know, and it's confusing. And when I sought clarification, so I'm gonna ask that the committee vote to allocate no seats for grade nine in school choice, though I'm not a hundred percent sure you need that. It's just because they send us a letter once a year asking us to show them the vote and asking us to show them the agenda.
Well, I got, I got a point of order. Even though we have four hundred and ten, we always have ten to fifteen percent that decide not to come here or change their mind. And usually, we set a limit.
Right.
So if we vote now not to, to close choice.
Mm-hmm.
Suppose that, I, I don't think it'll happen, but.
Some of those nine percent don't come.
Yeah, and we drop down to say three twenty. Can we reopen it, think, go back to up or?
I would have to ask you again in May.
You can do that.
Yeah.
All right, yes, sir.
In a case like that, which is a really good point, I think it would be beneficial to the communities to go back and reevaluate kids that applied for the school from the eleven communities. See if there's a fit there that would.
Fill those seats.
Fill those seats. I know, um, it's, it's been a problem in the past when kids from our own community don't get to come in and be tested out, and then we're pulling a lottery of school of choice to allow them to come in, which no test. I think it's, uh, something should be put in place for that mechanism to happen.
It's a valid point, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
No in-district students are, are rejected unless they don't meet qualifications.
Am I right?
We, we always go to in-district before we go to school choice, no matter what.
You're, you're addressing that to me, so I'm gonna respond to that.
I'm just, yes.
As it's been told to me, and please correct me if I'm wrong, that students apply, the ones that are denied are replaced with school of choice. And what, you, you're not allowed to test the school of choice, you take them as a lottery. Is that correct?
They meet all the requirements.
They meet the requirements. All choice students have to meet the requirements.
Isn't that what's being challenged?
But, but we still don't take a choice student over an in-district student that qualifies.
Well, what I'm saying is, say, I'm gonna use Groveland, that's the community I'm from. If we have fifty seats and we have, um, you know, if we have less than fifty people applying, absolutely, school of choice is, is.
Oh, I hope, you, you don't have fit, you don't have fifty seats.
I'll use that example.
Oh, okay, go ahead.
I don't know the number off the top of my head.
It doesn't matter.
I'm saying if we have more kids applying than we have seats for and they're, they've been eliminated through the testing process, I think while we're still taking the community's money, we owe them the option to come back, retest, reapply, rather than just reach out to.
I, I think I misunderstood you. Every, there's no allotted maximum seats for any community. Every student in the district can apply. Groveland could have everybody on their high school apply.
Okay.
And if everyone meets the state requirements, they all get accepted.
Okay.
The only time we use choice is when, say, the school committee says freshman class was gonna be three hundred and fifty students. Everybody that applies, we only get three hundred and twenty that meet the state requirements. Then we fill the remaining thirty with choice.
And what's been pointed out to me is kids are being denied, they're not passing the, your test to come into the school.
Yeah.
And then they're going off for school of choice. So the school of choice communities contribute five thousand dollars per student. Right now, our educational cost in this district is how much per?
Probably, Groveland's probably around sixteen thousand.
Okay, so that's.
Is that right?
Eleven thousand dollars that's gotta be made up for paying this bill, but our students are benefiting from the education.
No, you're, you're not paying the bill.
No, you're not paying that.
No, that's.
You only pay the bill for a student that comes here.
Only the student that comes here. If you have a student that doesn't meet the state requirements and goes to another school, that's nothing to do with us. We don't get any money out of that.
Only, who makes up the difference for the five thousand dollars? It's costing us sixteen thousand dollars to educate a student per year. We're receiving five thousand. Who's gonna make up that difference?
It's a company, you don't pay the sixteen.
Yeah.
That's why we, we vote.
It's a company, you don't pay the sixteen.
We voted on this, we've got a separate budget for school choice, that's why we voted on that. That's where we.
It's a separate budget, but somewhere, there's somebody making up the.
No, if.
It costs sixteen thousand dollars.
No, no, that's for the students that come here. And then the, the remainder is funded through a separate, which we voted on tonight. And that's where we.
When did this become an open discussion? We're talking.
Go ahead.
Okay?
Yeah.
Explain to me, please. If you've got an education costing sixteen thousand dollars and we're putting a five thousand dollar seat, person in that seat, where is that other eleven thousand dollars coming from?
It's, it's in revenue we don't get.
Still costing sixteen thousand from that seat.
No.
It's not, it's not. Well, it's, it's mathematics. The state says that because of Groveland or any community's ability to pay and per capita income, it's gonna cost you to send a student here sixteen thousand dollars.
Twelve thousand, seven eighty-three from Groveland.
Okay, twelve thousand, seven eighty-three. If that student comes, passes the sixty, sixty-seven points, passes the, the requirements, that student comes to Whittier. We get that money, which is state mandated. If the student doesn't, go somewhere else, that's nothing to do with us, that's your debt.
If you took that extra student from the community.
Right.
You would be getting twelve thousand dollars for that student, correct?
Yes, but we, but we can't.
But you're not, you're taking the five thousand dollar one, you put, you're leaving eleven thousand dollars on the table.
But if we don't take, if we don't take the student, we don't get any revenue. So we're saying that if we have a capacity of three hundred and fifty students.
Right.
Of all the communities, only three hundred and twenty qualify. We're saying we still have a capacity of thirty more students.
Right.
Why not make that up with at least five thousand dollars rather than do nothing? We can't go back to you and say, send some more students.
My point to you is people in the community are being denied that wanna come here. I've witnessed it, I've seen it. I've worked for the school district, I've worked for the school.
Not being denied, they just have to get sixty-seven points.
Right.
It's all they have to get. And they'll, and they're guaranteed to come here.
Excuse me.
Now, if, if that's not appropriate for your town, then you have to go to the state house. We have to abide by the state laws. They tell us what to do. We don't decide, oh, this student, we don't like him, you know? Every, that's why this year, we have four hundred and ten students. We're gonna have four hundred and ten in-district students. We have no room for choice. It's a benefit for Whittier because.
I understand that. And that's why I'm saying it would be benefit for the communities in Whittier if we would take these kids from the communities that are supporting the school at thirteen. I keep hearing different prices. I've, I've heard eighteen thousand at one.
Well, it depends what community you're in.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman.
Twelve thousand.
I mean, you, you, your, your discussion is on our school choice policy.
Yeah.
So, that's that's totally different from what you're asking. We've got a policy that says sixty-seven points, you're in. If it's not filled, we look to school choice. We are full now. But if you, we cannot go back to the students. There's a policy that that's been approved. By, I guess, a committee a long time ago in the state. So, we we don't have the choice to s- to just say we can go back. That's why we were looking to get the quality of the school up and get as many kids to apply that are qualified, and that's happened now for the first time. And we should all feel very proud of that. That it's now going to be an issue that qualified kids will not get in. Because too many may apply. Then we may have to go to, I I don't know what happens then. Do you go to the lottery?
We would go to a waitlist.
So, there there's, there that's.
In that case, the waiting list would be if kids dropped out in the first couple of weeks. They would give these kids an opportunity to come in, if I'm correct.
Yes.
Yes.
Qualified.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, that's a good question. When I first came on this board some fifteen, sixteen years ago, I was completely against school choice. I learned a lot about it. The administration here has taught a lot, taught me a lot about it. If there's vacant spots, the state has a policy of only five thousand dollars. Been that number for a long time. They have not taken one kid or denied one kid from the district that hasn't met the criteria. Now, the letters came out April first. They've already been in contact probably with the administration here. If they got denied, there's a process that they told them that they have to do, bring the report card in by the end of the year. And then that's up to the student, okay? There's no free ride. The dis- the sending districts have done a heck of a job. To get these numbers up to where they are right now, all right? Some five to six years ago, uh, Mr. Scully, I believe, was the principal up at Constantino. And he started up there putting a fear of guard into everybody up there. Roll your sleeves up and do your work. And the other communities have all come on board. I believe I just saw Groveland, Groveland get thirty-four out of thirty-six kids. That applied here this past April first. Am I correct, Mr. Superintendent? So, that's a great thing. The next thing that you're saying, we don't know what the state does for each town for the formula. Every town pays different, whether it's ten thousand dollars or eighteen thousand dollars.
Right.
They're all different. Nobody has the same. And every year it changes. Haverhill just went up eighty thousand dollars, increased, uh, eleven kids. Another community went up a hundred and sixty thousand, went twelve kids. So, there is no same policy or average. Um, the problem that's gonna happen now is the towns are gonna go crazy when they start seeing the numbers double and triple. Fifty thousand, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in their budgets, okay? And that's what it's all about, to get the kids in here. Now, if they keep going at that rate, if you keep going at that rate with four hundred kids come in and ten percent don't show up, it's still three sixty. You're gonna be way above the twelve or thirteen hundred kids that are in here. So, there is, and there is no more room for school choice. But they have, they have never taken advantage, since I've been on this board, on the school choice over anybody in this district. We have a criteria of sixty-seven points. I believe that's a fair number. If a kid can't make that, all he has to do is roll his sleeves up. He might have to go to the sending community high school until January. And then if he does, if if it's attendance, does graded attendance, behavior, marks, whatever it is, he will be in here in January. Cause I believe the middle of January, they look at him again, Mr. Superintendent. So, you are right on some things, but it's a very confusing thing. And I don't believe I've seen any kid in a district. And I get a lot of calls. This year, I didn't get too many, which is a great thing, um, because the sending communities are doing their job. And the kids are rolling their sleeves up and doing their job. It's not a free ride here. Every kid that gets in the school earned it. Thank you.
The school of choice, do they get, you say they get tested?
Yes.
Um, I'd just like to address one thing that you said, Doug, that I always had a problem with.
Yeah, it's a mission. You have to pass the admissions criteria, like any other student.
But the difference between what the district pays and what the five thousand we get from the state. It's gonna cost the districts that much money per student, whether there's empty seats or not. That, and the reason that that figure is so high is because you're paying the capital part of it. You're paying for the building. You're paying for all the teachers. You're paying for all the books. These choice students coming in don't own any of that. Our towns and cities own this building and.
That was the point I was making.
Yeah, that's the difference.
The cost to have the opportunity to fill that seat first.
And they do. They do.
But until we in, we raised our standards, we were cited by the state for not being a perf- a well-performing school. We had to do that. They encouraged us to do that. And we have, look how far we've come. Hundred percent graduation rate. They're going on to sec- to colleges.
I don't dispute that.
But that's the, that school choice five thousand is just, that if that seat is empty, it's empty. If we can fill it with a choice student, it's five thousand. You saw what we did with six hundred thousand of that early on in the evening. We paid for a lot of items out of that.
I don't.
So, okay.
Sir Murphy.
I'm done.
I'd just like to say.
Let me get a move on.
I'd just like to say, Mr. Early's summarization of that was probably the best one I've heard, and it explains everything, you know.
Yeah.
In a very simple form.
It was very good.
Covered everything.
So, and that is, in fact, to the agenda. This year, we'll probably, we need gonna, need a motion to close school choi- is that what you're saying?
Right, to to just not allocate any seats for grade nine.
Not allocate.
And I made a motion.
You made a motion. Was it second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? You can answer.
Next, Mr. Chairman, on the agenda. If you remember, we did a building study. I'm requesting permission for the school com- from the school committee. We worked on a statement of interest to send to MSBA. This by no means obligates us to do the project. All it does is it lets MSBA look at it, determine whether or not we get in the pipeline, determine which parts of it are eligible for reimbursement. And which parts of it are not eligible for reimbursement. And then, at that time, the building subcommittee, which is made up of the school committee and administration, would have to meet and determine what, if any, of the building project you wanna do.
Move forward.
So, it's, there's a specific motion that you have to pass, giving me permission to sign the statement of interest on your behalf. And again, you're not obligated. This does not mean you are doing the building project. This merely gets it into the MSBA pipeline. That's all it does.
Could you read that, please?
So, it it's the superintendent's recommendation that the school committee vote to authorize the superintendent to submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority the statement of interest dated April eighth, two thousand fifteen, for the Whittier Regional Vocational Technical High School located at one fifteen Amesbury Line Road, Haverhill, Massachusetts. Which describes and explains the following deficiencies in priority categories for which an application may be submitted to the Massachusetts School Building Authority in the future, as noted in priorities five and seven of this application. Regarding total renovation of existing building and systems updates project. And hereby further specifically acknowledges that by submitting the statement of interest form, the Massachusetts School Building Authority in no way guarantees the acceptance for approval of an application. The awarding of a grant or any other funding committed from the Massachusetts School Building Authority. Or commits the Whittier Regional Vocational Technical High School to file an application for funding with the Massachusetts School Building Authority.
So, moved.
Moved, second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Stroh. I I think it's self-explanatory. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
The last item is, on the superintendent's board, is the admissions update, Ms. Law. I hope we didn't take away all your thunder.
Patty, it's ruined now.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee, and Mr. DeRosa. Um, you did receive our admissions update for this year for the two thousand fifteen, sixteen school year. It is true, we've accepted, uh, four hundred and fifteen students of five hundred and forty-six applicants. Um, which was a dramatic increase over last year. So, if anybody has any questions about our indistrict applications, I'd be happy to answer them.
How many from Newbury?
Um, it's on the report.
Eight, eight applied, five accepted.
Oh, sorry, okay. I wish she said it. Sorry, I'll just read the report.
Yeah, okay.
I just had one quick question. Normally, um, on the accepted, how many don't come? Five percent, ten percent?
Um, it's, we're trying to, yeah, it, over the last five years, it's about eighty, eighty-five, eighty to eighty-five percent come.
Question for you. What is the capacity of the schools for, um, freshmen?
Well, the capacity of the school is.
Usually, we take between three fifty and three sixty freshmen.
Yeah.
Okay.
And you have four hundred and ten.
That moves the total enrollment over twelve fifty. The right might clear on that. But as pa- as far as occupancy goes, the Board of Health and the s- town, actually, the city of Haverhill. Uh, ha- has a set figure, which I'm not, can't remember, but it includes the number of students, the faculty. The, uh, administration, the.
All the staff.
Maintenance, all, everybody that works here during the day. So, to get more students, then we just let half the faculty go. Is that how it works?
Oh, yeah.
I think.
Yes. I was just gonna say, it it's been, my experience that the the most students that we've had is about thirteen hundred. When we get over thirteen hundred, then we start hitting the yellow zone and.
Right now, it's at thirteen hundred. What is the total capacity? Fifteen hundred with the teachers and everyone?
Almost, it's over fifty. It's almost sixteen hundred.
Yeah, sixteen hundred, yeah.
Yeah.
Cause right now, even if you take three fifty or four hundred, whatever number you want, you're losing two hundred and ninety-four in senior class. So, you're adding.
You're adding.
Over a hundred to a hundred and fifty more, which is a good thing because now we can clarify that school choice thing. The districts are doing their job. The send, the sending communities are doing their job, which is a great thing.
Is this the first time in your recollection that you've had total district?
Yes.
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 Yes, Mr. Mansfield.
What number are you comfortable with admitting?
We're in, we we've notified all four hundred because we feel that the students that choose not to come and go other places, that will be fine.
So, but let's, uh, I believe you said fifteen to twenty percent may not come.
Fifteen to twenty percent may not come.
So, twenty percent don't come, that's, we're down to three thirty-two. Then you would be coming back for choice students?
No, not necessarily, because we'll have the end of the year report cards on students who applied that didn't meet the init- the admissions requirement the first time out.
So, that's going back to the the kids that didn't make it in. Okay.
Right.
To, uh.
Yes, sir.
The minimum points, you said sixty-five points on the test of.
Sixty-seven.
Sixty-seven. So, everybody that wasn't accepted scored lower than that.
Yes, in district.
On the criteria. It's not a test. It's just how the criteria is scored in the primary area.
Sixty-seven above were accepted.
Yes.
And the ones that don't get a, get a writ- is it written a, what is it, how to get to that point?
Yes, they get a a letter that with a recommendation of areas of improvement. And then in June, we rescore all those applications again with a new report card and updated, um, attendance and all the other criteria.
An an F in English or math automatically disqualified. Is that right?
Until the end of the year, when we rescore again.
But if you don't.
If they're failing at the, at this time.
No matter what you do, you know, it's, you're automatically out.
Yeah, and we generally do accept an additional twenty students or so between now and over the summer. We continually are accepting students.
And then even if they don't make it by the end of the year, they can reapply for January, correct?
Yes, we accept mid-year grade nine admissions, and then again, all students in the whole district can apply for grade ten and for grade eleven. Which not all vocational school districts do, but we do.
Any other questions for Ms. Law?
Very good job.
Thank you.
Thank you for the.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is Ms. Lynch, Principal's Update.
Patty's a little taller than I am. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee, and Mr. DeRosa. This spring, we have over three hundred and seventy-eight students participating in our spring sports program. Um, it's been difficult, as you heard Connor, um, trying to arrange time on fields with the snow. Um, you know, the joke was, we'd be snowshoeing, playing baseball this spring. Um, but it looks like the snow is beginning to melt. And hopefully, we will be starting the spring season soon. Um, as of right now, we have had to delay a couple of games. I'm thinking we're probably gonna have a few double headers during April vacation to catch up, but that's looking very positive. Um, as I was sitting over there, I received a news bulletin. Um, we received a carpentry grant, um, using old office furniture. And, um, the students made the furniture into a game table, and we won first place. So, some of you saw it. I was so excited. Um, and we received twenty-five hundred dollars for the school. So, um, the kids are in South Boston right now celebrating, and I have pictures, if you don't wanna see, on my phone of of the, of them with the trophy. Um, some important dates to keep in mind. Our orientation that Patty was just talking about for new students is planned for May sixteenth. Uh, awards night for underclassmen is planned for May twentieth. At the mock crash for seniors is May twenty-first. The senior talent show is May twenty-second. And, um, the countdown has begun for senior sign-out. And the senior prom are May twenty-sixth, with graduation at May twenty-eighth, starting at six o'clock. As of right now, it's snowing out again. Um, our last day for students is June twenty-second. And that's all I have for you tonight. June twenty-second.
Oh, June twenty-second, excuse me. Yes, sir. I I just wanted to have, have the, uh, have any eighth graders come in from the district?
We have the orientation on, on May sixteenth, we have the orientation where they do some testing, and the parents, we we take tours and give them an overview of the school. So, May sixteenth, the big day for that.
Now, what about eighth graders coming in from the sending schools?
We did that. We did, um, tours in October and November.
That's in Oc- that's in the fall, all right. I wouldn't sure if it was in the spring or fall.
Yes.
Sir Murphy.
The competition today, how, do you know how many other, uh, competitors there were there?
I want to say nine, nine.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I saw that. It was very interesting.
They were pretty confident they were gonna win first place, so, you know, they all left. We met with them at about three thirty this afternoon, and they had their Whittier tee sh- Whittier shirts on. Um, we, you know, provided them with some drinks and some, some cookies and things like that for the trip, but they were very excited. And they're, I I mean, you saw the work. They should, they have a lot to be proud of. It was just a great, great, um, program. And, you know, everyone was very excited about, including the instructor.
Yeah.
We have any, uh, major damage on the fields with all the snow, if you don't know yet?
To be honest, we haven't even had a chance to get out there. You know, hopefully, I heard this weekend's gonna be warm, so n- next week, we can at least start cleaning them up.
Almost seventy.
Excuse me?
Monday and Tuesday's gonna be almost seventy.
Nice. There we go. Opening day, Monday.
That's right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
The next item on the agenda is Ms. Cosmos.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee, Superintendent DeRosa. Uh, you have your, um, third quarter variance analysis in your packet again. We do that every three months. And, um, once again, I'm very pleased to report that we are very much on track. Um, back in the fall, when we were informed about the nine C cuts, we froze discretionary spending, and I'm glad that we did. Because, as you know, this winter has been very, very challenging. And as I pointed out in my memo, there are some accounts that are primarily maintenance accounts that are overrun, and that's not surprising. But we certainly have plenty of other accounts that have green shaded on them that will be able to offset any of the maintenance overages that we, we had. Um, like every other district, we had a lot of snow removal costs. It seemed that pipes froze and equipment broke down. And it was very challenging here at Whittier, as it was everywhere else. But because we were very prudent last fall, we were able to weather, um, the additional expense from this difficult winter. And the only other thing I would point out is, again, you will probably see the large, um, deficit in the account for retiree insurance. And remember, I'm expensing that separately, and I will make a a transfer at the year end because the, um, money was funded, um, all in the active line. And we've changed that going forward in the budget. Any questions? Mr. Early.
Health aux, it's down thirty-one thousand.
Health aux.
Occupations, first page.
First page.
Health aux because we have, um, substitute, long-term substitute in there. For coverage, in addition to a person being on paid leave.
Contract services is over quite a bit. Is that because of the snow?
Yes.
Okay. Teacher aid, special ed.
There is, the special ed is over. The regular education aids are under. They will offset each other at year end.
Seventy-seven hundred on the, uh, the comptroller.
The comptroller, uh, yes. We, um, again, there are other variances. There are savings and other accounts with green. We had, um, a staffing change, and while we were in transition, the, um, part-timers were working full-time, and I was charging it to the comptroller line. So, there's an additional expense there. But there are savings in the accounts payable line and the payroll clerk line, um, that will offset that at the end of the year.
I saw the eighteen thousand on the, uh, tuition. That's probably.
Special ed.
Yeah, nine.
Special ed. And and as as you notice in the budget for next year, we upped the tuition because we're we're getting, you know, higher costs every year. And there are savings in other special ed accounts that will cover it.
I know this isn't big, like the copy incentive.
We had to replace the copiers. We had to, uh, most of them expired. We leased them under the state contract, so we get a good rate, but they are obviously, um.
You got more?
Uh, no, not necessarily more, but they're, uh.
Maintenance agreement.
No, they're they're, uh, what do, what do I wanna say? They're of higher caliber. They can fax and they can scan, and and they cost more. And we do a lot of copying here.
And electrical is nothing.
Electrical was underbudgeted.
And one more, carpentry seventeen thousand.
Carpentry is over because in the past, carpentry did not have a budget in the general budget. It was in school choice. And we made the decision to move that in. It was the only, uh, area of, uh, supply needs that was in school choice. And we decided, we have been deciding to phase out school choice expenditures going forward, seeing what's happening with school choice enrollments. So, uh, if you recall, I think that was one of the questions that we had at budget time. Why was there no budget the year before, and there was a budget this year? And that's because I provided for it in the budget next year.
Sporting good, uh, athletics. Why was, why is it twenty-six thousand dollars?
Over, because there are savings in other lines in athletics. It's probably what, yes.
You're gonna take it from another item for that. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any other question?
Anyone else?
It's true.
I just wanna ask about graphic arts. I noticed that, um, there was some deficits and.
Graphics arts, one of the things is, we had to replace some of the equipment that was broken, and we also had to replace a. And we also had to replace a copier, and that's a very big copier. And that copier was more costly to replace than, than the one previously. So the budget was probably less than we needed. And again, it will be addressed at the end of the year.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right, just real quick, but I see budgeted, I just noticed it, for the school resource office is 73, 532.
Yes.
Is that one or two?
One.
Okay. Obviously, just so you know, you're paying the costs, you're not paying just the base cost. Haverhill, which is my community, is obviously charging you for the detail rates and...
I'm aware of how the SROs are billed.
Okay, so you're paying, because I know we, we got that changed in Haverhill, that we wouldn't be billed for, for them working private work, but you're definitely getting billed. That's not a, a patrolman salary, 73, not even remotely close. So you're probably overbilled about $30,000 for private road jobs.
I think it also includes the cruiser, too, doesn't it?
Yes.
Then, but the number 73, there's no way, I'm remote, I'm very familiar with this.
We should look into that.
You're absolutely oversh, I think she's been through this before.
I have, we will, we will talk about that.
And I don't know if there's an agreement in place, but certainly, your costs are not 73,000 for a patrolman. I can absolutely tell you that with 110 percent certainty. You're probably looking at a cost of between 40 and 45,000. And if you add in a cruiser, 50, 55 at, at most.
Not a full-time year job.
Well, we can look into that, right?
And we're not, and you're not even paying for all 12 months. So you're paying 73,000 for nine months of work, but you're paying, so when they're out doing construction, road jobs, we're, we're footing the bill here out of our budget for road jobs, so. That's something that we should probably be looking into.
We'll look into that. Good point.
Is that something we wouldn't know, yeah?
All right.
This is Gilbert.
I just, I love the new format.
Yeah, rather than all the colors all through the lines, I thought it was easier to see.
I love this.
Oh, good, I'm glad.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Moving on, we have the chair report. We did the reorganization Monday night, had the review of the annual, annual agenda. Had our school committee goals set, and we just had the variance report. For the next meeting in May, everybody has got this in their packet tonight. These are the, the subcommittee placements. We have three new members. Three, two, one, three, yeah. Anyway, please take a look, I think we should, and all the new members, please take a look at these committees and see which one you want to be on. Please notify the superintendent or myself, which if you're interested in that, the next meeting, will we, will we align everybody to get on... I think it's a good time now for some of the new members that have interest in, you know, in the policy, the salaries, plan ops, whatever, to get on these committees if they wish to. The more the merrier, yes, sir.
Question, Monday night's meeting, I talked to the superintendent. I didn't see it on the calendar for the committee. And, you know, it's important that we post these meetings. I want them just, somebody to double-check and make sure that meeting was posted.
All right.
The only calendar I'm aware of for the meetings are under the school committee. If there's another calendar I should be looking at, please.
Where you want? Double-check Monday's meeting. You should be getting them mailed, you should be getting them in the mail, too.
I had tonight's meeting in the mail, I didn't receive Monday night's, but it wasn't on...
It was sent?
Yep. Monday night's, never read, meeting never came to my house.
I got the meeting notice, yeah. Okay, well, double-check.
I requested, Felisa, and I'm surprised that the rest of the committee doesn't do it this way. Is to have emails sent out with the schedules on emails. Most of the correspondence through the other school district that I'm on is through email.
Oh, you know what?
I never check my email.
Why don't you bring that up in new business, because that's been a long-going issue here, so.
I certainly will, thank you for that.
Okay. All righty, school calendar, we'll be working, we'll be, will that be ready for the next meeting?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
And we'll start the superintendent's evaluation. Okay, subcommittee reports. We have the March 4th executive committee minutes to approve, is there a motion?
Move to accept the March 4th minutes of the executive.
Discussion, just for a second.
Well, you need a second.
Well, we have to wait till it's second.
You have to have a second.
Get the second first. Parliamentary procedure.
The motion's on the floor tonight, it didn't pass. It seems that that should have been approved first, somehow.
But I don't hold on to the...
But I'm not a parliamentary, I don't know.
It's a different motion, yeah, this is just the...
It was a whole different motion, I think we discussed that. It wasn't an amendment to a previous...
I, I do understand that.
Well, we'll, we'll, we'll check, we'll have the parliamentarian check into that.
It's on the agenda.
On the agenda, right.
It's just, it's just minutes, it's, you can take it, it doesn't matter what you order, you take it in.
Okay, thank you.
I just don't know.
All in favor?
I'm gonna abstain, because I wasn't here, so I'm gonna abstain as well.
Good. All in favor, two extensions. All right, instructional personnel. I don't think they've met, is there a meeting?
And have not met, no need for a schedule, uh, meetings, Mr. Chairman.
Plan operations.
We might need a meeting in May, Mr. Chairman, to talk about summer projects.
Okay. Salary negotiations.
Do we want to schedule that now?
Let's schedule that now.
I first want to see when Harry has the stuff together.
Okay, you'll notify us.
Yeah.
All right, thanks.
Salary negotiations, we do need a meeting.
We're meeting Tuesday.
April 14th. Right here, what time is it? 7 o'clock? 6? Is that next Tuesday?
Yes.
Well, the reds are...
Got priorities.
All right, I'll be here. Okay. Policy, Mr. Irving.
We have not met, and I don't believe we need a meeting possibly in June.
Not at this time, no.
Okay. This, are we all done with wastewater?
There'll be one final meeting when the spring cleanup is done by the outside company to release the last check.
And we're satisfied with everything that transpired?
Yes.
Wasn't there an issue with one of the pumps or something?
Yeah, but it's being taken care of.
Being taken care, okay, thank you. Meeting dates, next regular meeting will be on May the 13th at 7:00 P.M. Any new business, Mr. Chairman?
I think we need a, a date for the executive committee.
Oh, for this?
We should.
Want to set that tonight?
We should.
Okay. Why don't we set a meeting date for the interviews?
Do you want the Wednesday after the April school vacation? You guys seem to like Wednesdays. Do you want the Wednesday after April school vacation?
29th?
Which is...
29th? That's right. 29th, April 29th.
You'll send a letter out?
Yes. Everybody's, everybody's welcome to come, everybody.
What's our usual, 6, 7 o'clock?
Want to do a 6 o'clock?
I'll raise my hand for nothing, go ahead.